Ladies and gentlemen, officially, to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council. We also will be sitting tonight as the Lakeport Municipal Sewer District and the successor agency to the Lakeport Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 6, 2015. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spillman?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
And Mayor Shield?
Present. And Pro Tem, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Pro Tem. Do we have any urgency items this evening?
No.
All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as opposed to.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. For each of our items tonight, you will have the opportunity to speak publicly. And if you wish to speak publicly on any item that is not on the agenda but within the purview of the Lakeport City Council, you may do so at open public input. We do ask that you fill out one of the public input forms. They're on the table when you come into chambers, and please hand that to the clerk if you wish to do so. Please understand that you will have three minutes, and council cannot come to a consensus or take any action on any item that's not on the agenda tonight. With that, we move on to our consent agenda, and we have five items, including ordinances, waive reading except by title, approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 15, 2015, approve the warrants register from September 3, 2015, approve application 2015-022 for the Clear Lake High School homecoming parade on October 9, 2015, and review and adopt or revise conflict of interest policy for the city of Lakeport. Does any council member wish to pull any of those items? Has anyone for the public wished to pull any of those items or have any comment on any of those items? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as opposed to.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens' input?
We do, yes.
Mr. Campos, come on up, please. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Ron Campos. I'm the owner of Campus Casuals, and I'm here as a concerned business owner for the improvement of Lakeport. I speak for myself, although I've talked to all of the business owners in Lakeport between first and fourth, and but again, I'll speak for myself for the concerns I have. I have a concern about making the sidewalk two and a half feet wider on each side. I just think it's a very unsafe thing to do. We measured it out, and the car doors will be coming open as the street, as the cars are going by. And I was wondering if you guys have had an impact study on the safety of that as far or the car doors opening or delivery trucks being, coming in and out as they're supposed to do. This is a big concern of ours, and it's something that we wanted to look at. Also, that bringing, taking out the poles or bringing in the trees. We're in a drought, and the city wants to bring in beautification of the trees. And I want to know if the public, if you had an impact study on if the roots were going to be a problem like they were before, what, because we tore them out? And if it's going to be maintained properly because they run out of money? Those are some of the things that I'm worried about. And also, the impact that it's going to have on small businesses. The streets are supposed to close down and the sidewalk for four to six months. I understand that it's supposed to be only increments. If you have the best, six months in Lakeport is going to be eight months. And you have two months closing of the street and the sidewalk per first to fourth. It's going to be a very big hardship on a lot of people. Myself, I would have to move my building, or I would have to leave my building. I don't own any rent, so leave the building to go somewhere else while this project went on for six months. With the Rocky Fire and the Valley Fire, we've already extended the credit lines pretty much as far as our creditors are going to be able to do. And then we come in in March, when they want to do this, and do it April, May, June, July, August, September, six months, dead of summer. It's a very big concern to me and all businesses in our street. Also, we are a historical district from first to fifth, and they're going to take the historical landscape away from the downtown if they do this, I feel. It's, I wondered if it's been in front of the historical review board? I know when I did remodel on my store, we went through two years of review to try to get that done. I know there's money here to be spent, but I don't necessarily say go spend the money at the expense of the business owners of Lakeport. And that's pretty much what it's doing. You don't have to have a 12 and a half foot sidewalk, move poles out that's already been put in, and make it unsafe for people getting in and out of their cars, because family of children or somebody getting in and out of the car will absolutely get hurt. There's no, I just took Councilwoman Parlet to look at it. I would invite any of you to walk it off with the city engineer and Kevin here and see, just, I stood out there while we were talking. I was cussed at, honked at, yelled at, and that's without the UPS trucks being down the middle. So, I, it's a very big concern of ours, especially closing the street down between four to six months. You close the street, you break up the sidewalks. They say we're only supposed to be closed for 72 hours. I'd like to see that in the right, because in the front of our store, they might be able to do that, but not down the whole sidewalk. They're closing the street and the sidewalk. And I truly don't want to have a problem with Lakeport City. I worked very closely with Richard Knowles when we did our remodel, and.
Mr. Campos, sorry, but just go ahead. If you could, please wrap it up.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
And Kevin, I assume that some of those concerns, and for the community's sake as well, Thursday evening, in these chambers at 5:30, we will be doing a town hall meeting with required staff here to answer questions such as Mr. Campos from any businesses and from our local citizenry as well. So, it was definitely a meeting to attend.
Is the council meeting there?
Is this an open public, is it posted meeting?
It's not posted.
It's not a posted meeting, so two of us can be there. I will be there, so if there's another council member that will be there. Only two of us are allowed, because beyond that, it's a Brown Act violation. We have to notice it, just like the council. All right, thank you again, Mr. Campos. Anyone else? Last minute here, a public comment, an item that's not on the agenda?
Just a question about starting time.
Five thirty.
Okay, I thought it was six.
That's 5:30?
5:30, that's correct. All right, we're moving on to a proclamation. Do we have anyone from the Lake Family Resource Center here? All right, one, two ladies, come on up. Introduce yourselves, just for, for record and for the public.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Lilly, Director of Programs. Hi, I'm Sherri Young, Domestic Violence and Crisis Center Program Manager.
I'm Michelle Latara, I'm the Domestic Violence Family Advocate.
I'm Deborah Franklin, I'm a community volunteer.
This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from domestic violence are often severe and long-lasting, and whereas in the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2015, Lake County law enforcement responded to over 409 incidents of domestic violence, including men, women, and children. In the past 12 months, the Victims' Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office has served over 377 victims of domestic violence, and the District Attorney's Office has prosecuted 68 felonies and 182 misdemeanor acts of domestic violence. Lake Family Resource Center responded to 335 crisis line calls, served victims, and additionally sheltered 101 domestic violence victims and their children for a total of 6,383 bed nights. Whereas it is crucially important to hold perpetrators responsible for assault and to prevent domestic violence at every opportunity, and whereas family violence is a community problem, stopping the cycle requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community, and whereas many organizations such as the District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clear Lake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending domestic violence in Lake County and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the month of October 2015 is designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Lakeport, and our community is urged to support the efforts of the agencies assisting victims of domestic violence and to increase their involvement and efforts to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening our community and creating an environment which honors, nurtures, and protects all members of every family. And signed by my hand, Mayor of the City of Lakeport. So, I will hand this proclamation to you ladies.
Thank you.
And then I think Elizabeth probably want to do one picture there.
I just want to.
Oh, I'll let you, I'll let you speak. Oh, strangely how you planned that, huh?
I know, right?
Oh, yeah, you guys are fine. I'll stand right here.
That's good.
And then, please, if I may, I would like to say a few words, and then if you, if you can hand some of those to the clerk if you would like.
So, on top of all these statistics that were just, that we just heard about, currently right now, we have over two dozen women and children at our shelter, and this number is actually low. It's not that high. And it's important to remember that these are only folks who are able to escape and flee and get to safety. So, I feel like the magic number is actually one. It takes one person to reach out and speak about domestic violence, and a whole bunch of ones equals an entire community. And I think it's pretty safe to say that our community and our city of Lakeport will not tolerate domestic violence. So, I encourage everybody just to reach out to one person, speak out, and help end the violence. So, thank you on behalf of Lake Family Resource Center for proclaiming October Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, ladies, very much for being here, and of course, the Lake Family Resource Center. Your services are invaluable along with the other agencies, and I can't imagine how those that need it the most would be able to survive without your help. So, thank you again very much. Next, we're moving on to a presentation from the Lake Cyanotoxin Monitoring Program. It's from Ms. Sarah Ryan. Sarah, thank you for being here this evening as well.
Yes. So, we do have a PowerPoint. A lot of people normally look at the PowerPoint and talk to you. There's an angle this way.
You can, you can come on the other side if you like. Have the podium there, and then the microphone will move with you.
That's better. That's better. So, my name is Sarah Ryan. I'm the Environmental Director for the Big Valley Band of Elan Indian, and as you probably know, Big Valley Rancheria is just right outside of the city of Lakeport in unincorporated areas. The Tribes Environmental Program has been going on since the 90s, and I've worked for the tribes since 2001. And today, Corolla Kennedy, who's the Environmental Director at Big Val, at Elan Indian Colony, we are here today to go over the cyanobacteria and cyanotoxin monitoring program that we've been conducting since last fall. And although we've been providing information to the councils and to other, to the other agencies as part of the task force, we wanted to actually meet with you and give you a chance to ask questions and just provide information about the, about the program. So, the tribal environmental programs that, there are seven federally recognized tribes in Lake County, and all of the programs are funded in different ways, excuse me, and are focusing on different things, but in general, tribes that are doing water quality monitoring on Clear Lake have been providing information and water quality results to US EPA since the 90s. And we attempt to collaborate with state and local agencies. Sometimes there are issues and difficulties with that, but the goal is that we all are sharing information and are, are working to manage a lake, co-manage a lake. The environmental protection programs are all about protecting the natural resources. We're talking about the native species and the toolies and whatnot, so the tribes can continue to use them for food, ceremonies, recreation, and water quality. These are important parts of the identity and the continuation of tribal cultures. There's also a term called environmental justice, which is all about disproportionate impacts of pollution on sensitive populations. And so, we see environmental programs, environmental protection programs as reducing those disproportionate impacts, because if you have to go in the water for ceremonial purposes and you can't avoid the water at a certain time, it doesn't matter if there's a cyanobacteria bloom in there and cyanotoxin, cyanotoxins, you have to go in there because of spiritual or religious reasons. And so, we're, so there's no avoiding that. So, we're, our programs are all about reducing that potential for negative impacts, because they must practice these, these ways in order to carry on traditions and to carry on spiritual practices. So, these are, these are non-divisible types of activities that are occurring. So, we want to reduce the impacts of pollution so that these lifestyles and choices can be continued on. So, I want to talk about cyanobacteria and cyanotoxins. Sorry about the picture covering that last line, but you've probably heard about this in the news quite a bit, and even for Clear Lake, cyanobacteria are, is also known as blue-green algae, and they are naturally occurring bacteria. They do, you, they eat the nutrients that we hear about. We have a nutrient TMDL on the lake, so they eat the nutrients. They also need to have sunlight, so that's why you see the blooms in the middle of the day. They're, they're obtaining sunlight, and then they can kind of go down in the nighttime, and you don't really see the blooms too much. So, those are the blooms. It's also known as blue-green algae. This type of bacteria, cyanobacteria produces, some of them produce cyanotoxins. As you can imagine, toxins are harmful, and some can be harmful to health. They can be neurotoxins, which affect your nervous system, dermatoxins, which affect your, your skin, and hepatotoxins, which affect your liver. And you can be exposed to these cyanotoxins through drinking the water, coming into contact with the water, or eating the cyanobacteria mats, which of course, I don't think any people are doing that, but probably dogs are. We know the dogs are eating those mats. They like smelly things. They go to the mats directly. We do have 17 water purveyors on Clear Lake that are pulling their water from the lake. Matter of fact, the city of Clear Lake is on Clear Lake water as well as Scott Street, whatever. So, what is happening to the lake? Does it impact your, your drinking water that's provided to the city? So, we developed back in 2014, Elan Indian Colony, Big Valley Rancheria got together to start doing water quality monitoring specifically for cyanotoxin because it was not happening in the county. There was a small amount of it that's been done over the years. I can specifically give you details on that, but basically, because we were seeing the blooms, because people complaining about algae smell in the water, because it was happening in areas that tribal members go in and need to use, we wanted to just go ahead and let's use our water programs to do cyanotoxin monitoring. So, as I mentioned before, it's really about protecting tribal beneficial uses, but that does protect the uses of other people of Clear Lake, you know, who use Clear Lake. It's, it's really about water quality, so, and improved water quality. And our goals are also to, and when we started doing our cyanotoxin monitoring, to share this information. So, we have had a transparent program throughout, since the start of last year. Every single one of those lab results have been emailed out to the Clear Lake Cyanobacteria Task Force as well as to EPA, certainly to local officials. And that's what we wanted, because the tribes are concerned about the cyanotoxins and think that we need to talk about this in a very transparent way and not get concerned about other, you know, reasons to hide it. We need to face it head-on. There are, when you start monitoring, there are trends that you can see. So, we, and part of our program goal is to see if we're seeing trends in certain areas of hot spots more than others. I'd be happy to hear that the Lakeport shoreline where we've been monitoring is, is doing very well this year. You've actually had no exceedances of the threshold set by the state, which is wonderful. Last year, you did. Hopefully, next year, it's going to be in good shape as this year, but that's why we're doing the monitoring. And we are sharing the toxin-related information because it is a health issue. There are levels that have been settled until that minute that are, that are, where the state sees as safe recreating. And when there are exceedances of that, that information should be provided to the public so that they can be, make their own decisions about whether they're going to take that risk. In our monitoring, we actually use a federally approved quality assurance plan. It's called QUAP, and it ensures that there are standard operating procedures in our monitoring. There's a sampling design, and we're using certified laboratories that ensures that the data that we collect is scientifically sound and legally sound. Here's an example of a monitoring log. When we go out to our sites, we are also looking at other water chemistry parameters. This is part of the trends I'm talking about. So, we're looking at salinity and dissolved oxygen and specific conductivity, things that, and pH, things that are actually going to change if you see pollution in there. And this is just part of our regular water quality monitoring program that Big Valley has been doing on our side of the lake for, since the 90s. But here's a log. We, we document all this and provide the information to the Water Quality Exchange. Here's, this is hard to read, but just gives an example of our rationale for choosing sites. In 2014, we had eight sites in, I believe, eight sites, and in 2015, we've got 18 sites. Corolla will go over that in a little bit, but we, we were choosing high recreation areas. We also wanted to see areas, sample water quality in areas where there were toolies or there are septic systems, just to see if we are noticing blooms happening and toxin levels higher in some areas than others. So, the sites that we've chosen are also tribally sensitive sites. We added those wherever we could, so we have a few of those as well. This is just as part of the list. In our monitoring program, we also have several labs that we're using. The, the first lab is something that is being set up for future monitoring through the US EPA Richmond Lab, US EPA Regional Richmond Lab. But where we have been sending our samples, so we're taking water quality samples, and we're, and Corolla will go into this, but we are determining which, which toxins to analyze for, and we are, the samples that we've been, having analyzed in last fall and this year have been to the second lab, the California Health and Food Safety Lab System, and that's also known as the UC Davis Lab. So, it's UC Davis Animal Lab. It was, they do cyanotoxin analysis using LCMS, which is a standard way of counting the types of toxins you have in there and the numbers. We have done also nutrient analysis and fecal coliform analysis last year. We were seeing some interesting results protected on the Lakeport, city of Lakeport shoreline with fecal coliform, and that is something that we've discussed with staff a little bit and are also interested in pursuing that as we go along. We have, I believe that we have a fecal coliform problem on the lake in various spots that continue on throughout the summer, before the rains and after the rains. This is actually one of the handouts. So, you have types of cyanobacteria in Clear Lake, and please note that, that you have, the toxin is the second column, and you go into the health effects with the, with the last columns. What we see mainly in Clear Lake is the first box under the genera, and that's microcystis producing microcystins. Microcystins are hepatotoxins, which means they affect the liver primarily, and that is an issue for, certainly for drinking water. If people are consuming water that has cyanotoxins, well, particularly microcystins in them, they are going to be, develop liver problems over time. The Russian River dog deaths that happened recently were antotoxins. So, you go down to the third box, I believe it was Anabena was the type of cyanobacteria that was there. That's also found in this lake. They had high levels of antotoxins in Russian River. We do have trace levels of antotoxins in Clear Lake. Those are neurotoxins. You know, whenever we do this presentation, we also get asked, well, what can you do about it? And I wanted to list just sources of nutrients. As I mentioned earlier, these are the things that actually can build a cyanobacterial bloom, and it's phosphorus and nitrogen in elevated levels. And as you know, we have a nutrient TMDL, which means we're supposed to be reducing these types of nutrients, phosphorus and nitrogen. And those are some of the examples of the sort of where those nutrients can be coming from. We, you know, you guys had a very large sanitary sewer overflow, I believe in 2006 or so that, that was a spill into the water course. According to the OES reports, CALO EES reports, that was about 6 million gallons of treated effluent. So, it does happen that sewer spills happen or occur, but around the lake, there are septic tanks, and as you know, dirt roads. In Clear Lake, there's a lot of ways that nutrients are fed into the lake. There's a, there's a chemistry about the way that the phosphorus that's coming in through the soil is bound and unbound due to oxygen levels, but for the most part, we have a nice meal in the lake, and we've got continuous meal coming from runoff whenever we have that. Quickly, OEEHA, the Office of Environmental Health has an assessment, which is part of CALPA, in 2012, set a, set action levels for, for microsystems, antotoxin, and cylinders from opson. I just want to talk about microsystems, because this is what we're finding in Clear Lake primarily last year and this year. And please note that they've set a level of 0.8 parts per billion for human recreational uses. This is based on children swimming in a water body and the amount of water that kids swallow when there's rain, so, and playing around in the water. So, please note, 0.8 parts per billion is what the state has said is an action level for safer recreation, and they don't say that it's, you have to close it if it's higher than that. They don't say much to it, except, this is our toxicological study. If you're higher than that 0.8, you're going to want to do something about it and certainly inform the public. And we're going to talk about what our results are in just a moment. There is another guideline that was set earlier than that. The Blue Green Algae Blooms Were Group, which is part of the State Water Resources Control Board, and in 2010, two years prior, had said, anything over eight parts per billion, there needs to be a, a health advisory. Let me just cut to the chase and say, last year, the city of Lakeport had 874, was the highest that you've got. So, definitely higher than 0.8, definitely higher than eight parts per billion. This year, it's not, it's been, I believe, non-detect, so wonderfully. Okay, I'm going to pass this on to Corolla, who's going to go into the next section.
As Sarah discussed, we did form a task group when we received the high results from the 2014 monitoring. Our first, our task boys, task force does include the tribes, city of Lakeport, and Clear Lake, Lake County Water Resources, Lake County Environmental Health, the Public Health, US EPA, State Water Resources Control Board, California Office of Environmental Health Assessments, California Department of Public Health, CALPA, and the Central Regional Water Quality Board. For our 2014 monitoring, we did have the eight sites around the lake that we chose. Most of them were the tribally sensitive lakes, sensitive sites. There were some recreation sites that we did have, Austin Park, city of Lakeport, or the Lucerne Park. But from the high results that we did receive in 2014 at the Clear Lake Oaks spot, which was just about 50 yards off the shoreline from where the water intake was, or is currently, was 17,000 parts per billion right on the shoreline. Through some of, another test that I had ran last year in Austin Park, where I had taken a sample at the shoreline and gotten 600, and then went out in the shore, or out into the lake a little bit further, at about 10 yards, it did drop by a magnitude and dropped down into 60. So, I mean, there is changes as it goes through, you know, different areas of the lake and where you're at, but I mean, it is one, the testing is one location at one point and one time. It does change. It can go up, it can go down, you know, it's hard to tell. But we did advocate for signage last year on, along the shorelines. We did have a warning sign that was designed, that was put up in the Clear Lake area, because those were our highest results. Clear Lake Oaks and Austin Parks did exceed the thresholds. For 2014, we did have the eight sites. These are the listed eight sites around the lake. On the map that you do have has both our 2015 and 14. There's a color difference between it. The green ones are the sites from 2014, and then the added colors are the ones that we added in 2015. Lakeport TNT was last year the highest result that you did have.
That's, that's First Street. That's First Street Ramp where the old TNT is.
Yeah, the First Street Ramp, and the highest I did, or the highest result that you did have of that was down 877 points per parts per billion. But through the seven sampling events that we did have during the 2014 sampling, it was at 28% above the threshold. I believe there was only two times during those seven sampling, or it was two times out of the seven sampling events. And then Lucerne was our next closest site to Lakeport, and at that one, we had 12.5% over the limit, which was one time out of the eight sampling events. Here's where the list, the results for Lakeport, six of the, or five of the, seven different sample events. It shows the 877 that we got in the, it looks like 926 or 914. September was definitely the, the hotspot, but that was when we started our program, was right when the lake turned. sample events. It shows the 877 that we got in the, it's like 9/26, or 9/14. September was definitely the hot spot, but that was when we started our program, was right when the lake turned at Labor Day. And this is the results from Lucerne. We did then move into our 2015 monitoring program based on what we had done in 2014. We did receive extra funding from different sources, BIA, also EPA and CALOEPA, I believe Sarah received from there. And this allowed us to vamp up our program and add 10 more sites to it. EPA recommended that we go towards a recreational sampling is where she wanted, they wanted us to keep. To do it all at once would incorporate having to do, you know, multiple sites if we get into the middle of the lake. But within this, we also changed our monitoring program and added a few more, a few more things. We do now do the cyanobacteria cell identification, where we look at the different types of cyanobacteria that are in the water. We go out, we take two water samples, do our water quality chemicals that, our water quality logs that Sarah had shown you earlier. Take two water samples, take these back to our office. With one sample, we do the cell identification, look at what cyanobacteria is in there, so we can test and look at which, what samples we want to send for, what we want to test for toxin-wise. And then also, we do an ELISA kit to determine if there is a microcystin break in there at that point in time. And that, the test kit is a strip kit that's done in the office, and it does zero to 10 parts per billion. So it gives us an idea if we need to send off a microcystin. Here we do have the 2015 map, which you guys do have in the handouts, and it shows the green sites for 2014, and then we added on all the yellow sites. We did hand out the different cell ID sheets, so it shows you how we do our cell identification, what we're looking at. There's also, and EPA frequently asks questions in there that EPA just put out in July 2015, which has somewhat, very good information in it. And then we did hand out the results table also for 2015. And when you're looking at the results table, each, your site IDs are listed on the map, so you can identify it from the map and locate it. This is the cell ID sheet that we did hand out to you that does show how, where we write our, or this is what we're looking at and what we find is the dominant species, which helps assist us in what we're going to test for toxin-wise at the lab. The signage, we did hand out the examples of the signage. Scotts Valley, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians also did receive a CALOEPA DJ grant this year for doing signage on cyanobacteria and cyanotoxins for the shorelines when you reach a low, medium, or high threshold on the levels. These signs can be provided through their grant and paid for through their grant. They're also going to look at doing focus groups with three to four focus groups with the cities, with the City of Lakeport and City of Clear Lake, and it looks like with the tribes also, to get the comments from the public and see what signs they would like to see, what the comfortability is, and what would work best and be comfortable to see out there. We do have the low one, minimal risk one, a medium, and then the high. These signs would be changed by us when we're out there doing our monitoring, because we're out there, and time can be changed by the county, by the city, however it works. But the signs are free. They do have the grant to pay for these signs at this point in time. And the sign itself works like a sign on the back of a truck with a hazmat where it flips. So you'd just be able to flip it to one, low, medium, or high. There has been some testing done with the drinking water purveyors. As Sarah said, there's 17 water purveyors on the lake that do pull water from the lake. Their intakes are further out in the lake, so their levels, their raw water levels are lower than what we're receiving on the shorelines. Here's the results of what they have, what has been tested. They did do testing in 2013 with no detects on all of the finished water that came back. Some of the raw waters did have cyanotoxin or microcystin in Highlands, which is down in Clear Lake. The City of Clear Lake can pull from the Redbud area. That one did have the highest result of 23.8. In conversations with the engineers from the State Water Resource Control Board, they do state that the systems here around Clear Lake can take out two magnitudes, which if you're looking at the 23.8, basically the system could take it down to a .238. So they can take it down two decimal points, is what their treatment efficiency is. I do have funding in my program to do a treatment efficiency with various water treatment plants. My intent was to do it this year, but it didn't come up with the change in the lake and how the toxin levels had dropped. Since the fire, don't know if it's relative to the fire, but since the fire, the lake has since become inhabited with diatoms. So it's, and the cyanobacteria has gone away, which is a whole nother study we're working, a whole nother thing we're looking at. With the drinking water thresholds that are listed, as it is, it's all recommended guidelines, so there is no regulation, so there is no standards to test. It's not mandatory to test. There's only guidelines and suggestions. WHO in the 1990s came out with the 1 parts per billion for microcystin. Recently, US EPA came out with their guidance, and they're looking at a .3 micrograms per liter, parts per billion, for children under the age of six, and a 1.6 for adults. So basically, 30 parts per billion in a drink, a raw water drinking, which puts you right at their threshold for their treatment. And then Sarah will go into some of the remediations that...
So we recently did a presentation before the Clear Lake City Council, and they've got the hotspots down there this year and last year. And so our part of the shoreline has been pretty good, but except for a couple of hits that the First Street Ramp had last year. But we have, we have seen, Big Valley, Ventura has two shorelines. The tribe of Ferndale is known as Clear Lake Vista, that's in Sodavate Cove. That is on septic tanks. And that whole area is on septic tanks, and the cyanobacteria blooms are pretty bad over there. What we've found for the last several years, we've been removing weeds manually. Sometimes we'll, you know, hire a mechanical harvester, it's a lot more expensive. But manually removing weeds where cyanobacteria, if you kill weeds with chemicals, that falls down to the bottom of the lake. It then becomes, the nutrients that are in the weeds get released, and it becomes food for the next season. But if you remove them manually, you're removing the food. Now, we have a lot of food. Like I said, we've got a lot of phosphorus and nitrogen coming in with runoff, and also it's already just sitting there in the lake. But we, this is actually a nutrient reduction type of project to manually remove these weeds. And I spoke with Holly Grover from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Board, and this is a fundable task under the 319 Non-Source Grants, which are for $800,000. So this is a type of thing where you can employ people, you're removing the weeds. Now, it's not a solution, and it's just a short-term thing, but it is removing sources of nutrients. And we've been actually calculating the nutrient reduction that's occurring because of our weed removal. And just within a short period of time, along Big Valley shorelines, we've removed something like 75 tons of weeds, which translates to, I wish I brought it, but something like, a certain amount of phosphorus is being removed when we remove the weeds. So the weed removal is something that, instead of chemical treatment, should be looked at as an option for at least reducing the type of impact that you're having along your shoreline. This is a pile of weeds. What we do is we basically compost it. That's a temporary storage area. We're basically composting the weeds, letting it sit. We did send it to an ag lab, and it's very high, the weeds are very high in nitrogen and phosphorus, and it's a great fertilizer. It would be an amendment to any fertilizer, so I'm looking to run a, you know, develop a company based on this. But there's a lot of weeds coming out of the lake. Aeration is another thing that we do. We have a water pump, and we have a fire hose, and we're circulating the lake water back into the lake. And what it does is you can see out, this is the Big Valley Marina, Conectivista, but what they would do, several days a week, would stand out there and just basically spray into the water, and the mats and the scum would go away. And the reason why is because we're oxygenating the water. And oxygen is something that cyanobacteria, it would rather be in areas where there's lower oxygen. And oxygenating the area allows other organisms to outcompete the cyanobacteria. So you end up probably having a weed problem, but you certainly don't have a cyanobacteria problem. So us oxygenating is a scientific way to deal with, at least a short-term solution of reducing the impact of blooms. So on our shorelines, our toxin levels have been extremely low. The Big Valley shoreline has stayed, stayed non-detect or at what, 1 part per billion. At Clear Lake Vista, I think it's gone up to like 12 parts per billion in the last, in all of our monitoring events. And we relate that to the types of remediation programs we have on there, which can be federally funded. So suggestions that we have for you, based on our presentation, is that we do believe that signage is extremely important to inform the public of risks and options. That is signage that is more specific than the signage that you have there right now, which says avoid it when there's a bloom. Well, I, you know, the fact is that when the blooms die, the toxins still can be in the water for another week and a half or two weeks. And if people are just avoiding the bloom, they're not necessarily avoiding the toxins. We also think that press releases are really important for the public to, so that they can make some decisions about whether they want to go in the water or not. There are programs, as I said, to bait your weeds and also to aerate your shoreline, which will make a difference in terms of the cyanobacteria blooms. And I think it's very important that the water purveyors, when we're getting levels of 800, as we did, or 17,000, as we did last year, or 10,000, which is what Austin Park had this year, that your water purveyors that are nearby really should be testing the treated drinking water for cyanotoxins to see if the treatment facility has actually reduced it down to non-detect. Right now, they're not required to, and therefore they are not doing it. But really, it's a public health issue, and they should be doing it for the public. US EPA does support the work of the task force. It's the tribes that are specifically funded to do the monitoring, but as Corolla mentioned, we do meet with the task force to go over this data and information and the study. And they support our work because it will, it actually will allow us to find ways to remediate for water quality. Just quickly, cyanotoxins are in the news. Drinking water recommended guidelines came out in 2015. There have been livestock and dog deaths that have happened continuously. The Toledo Ohio incident happened a couple of years ago, which shut the water down for a certain number of days, and it was a big deal. There is also a joint project going on with federal agencies that I know the county is somewhat involved in. And frankly, our results and our pushingness at the federal level and at the state level means that more money became available. And it's put Clear Lake on the list as a higher priority water body for EPA, which means that not so much of the looking at going, this is bad, but they're saying, we want to make more funding available so that it can be fixed. So that's basically our presentation. If you have any questions?
Questions, counsel?
So you said that 2014 was a really bad year, and you had basically a non-detect 2015. Is that what you said?
On the majority of the upper arm, yes. It's been no detects and below the threshold levels. Oakarm has, I don't know, let me look at some of them. The Oakarm has got a 10, to 10 parts per billion, it looks like 50% of the time in the Clear Lake Oaks area. Elam, I believe, that Elam shoreline was right roughly around the 45% of the time. And then the lower arm is one of the troubled arms, because it is your outflow. That's where Cache Creek exits out of the lake, so everything flows down to that area. Redbud is a new point that we have added. Looks like about 75% of the time on Redbud, and then also on Austin Park stayed pretty high. I did have a level at Austin Park of 10,000 parts per billion in August. The big difference between 2014 and 15, too, is the timeline. We started, I started the monitoring program, or we started the monitoring in the beginning of May of this year for the, for monitoring on the cyanotoxins. Last year, we didn't start until the 1st of September. So prior to what was going on, we don't have any records on that. But yeah, there were some high hits definitely in 14. And 15, it's turned around something.
Now, in 2014, when you talked about two out of, exceeded the limit twice in seven samples in 2014?
Yes.
And the one time...
For Lakeport, yes.
And the one time you exceeded it by a power of 100 in one particular month. But the other five times, there was like a non-detect. Or basically, it was below the threshold.
Yeah, below the threshold.
It was not exceeding. So in other words, there was like, five out of seven times, which is, you know, 75% of the time, let's say, you didn't even exceed it. One time you exceeded it by 100-fold, because it was like a troublesome time. My kind of concept is, do you like take photographs? Because you say you take it at the same place, same, because it seems to me that it's like this nasty horrible muck right there, and you like stick this sample in there. I mean, obviously, it's going to be 100 times worse than it would be if it was relatively clear. And 99.99% of the water is not anywhere near the shore. It's out there in the middle, and we're sampling right near the shore.
Which is where people are repurposed.
Right, exactly. But the point I'm making is, is that even during 2014, one time we were 100 times over what it should be, one other time, but the rest of the time we were totally in compliance. And the sign says, put up signs, warning people about toxic algae. You know, I've been here for 46 years, and if I wanted to close down Lake County, that's exactly what I would do, is put those signs up. And then people would see that there's a danger of cyanotoxin that could possibly be there, even though this year we haven't had any problems whatsoever.
Well, you wouldn't have the signs up then. The signs would only go up during the period of time that the monitoring showed that the toxin was...
That's not what that said. It said, put signs up.
No, they would be, as she said, it would be changed, it's very easily changed. It could be changed by any of your staff or whatever.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's understandable. But my point is, is that the last thing I ever want to see out there is a sign that says there's dangerous cyanotoxins and toxic bacteria that could kill your dog or your children when it's not necessary. I mean, and last year, we were absolutely clear.
Right.
So the idea of signs right now is like, we don't want to go there with signs. I mean, that's kind of my feeling, until there's a problem.
Right. I mean, there are free signs right now that can be installed when there is a problem, or you can pay for the signs yourself at some future point. It's, the signs also are draft, what you saw, and there is just a draft, and it can be, you know, based on other criteria. But there are people, I mean, Corolla had results one day. We don't find out the results for about a week. That's an unfortunate thing, but it's the fastest they can go. And the day that she was out there monitoring one particular spot, there was children, you know, animals, all sorts of things in this particular beach. So we find out a week later, wow, it was at 10,000. You know, if that kid was swimming in there and swallowing the water, if the dogs were eating the mats, we could have an issue. Now, one of the things they're talking about with public health and Dr. Karen Tate, is the reporting of these illnesses and symptoms. And of course, you know, you have people who go, oh my gosh, I have a headache, I must have ingested, you know, lake water. She has to weed all of those things out. But she has been working with the physicians since last year to develop a credible list of potential health issues. And she's also working with veterinarians about dog or animal illnesses. So we've been fortunate, as Corolla said, it can be 800, but 15 feet away, it's 12, or whatever. And that's the, that's the difficult thing about it, because it might be 800 here, it might be 25,000 or 400,000 over there. We just go to the same spot. We're not looking for the bloom. We're going to the same spot each time.
Yeah, see, my question is, what would be very helpful, I think, is if you had photographic correlation that says, this is what this looked like when we took the sample. No wonder it's like 8,000, and you shouldn't be going in there. And I think that's the signage we've been saying, whenever you see a noticeable bloom, and it's like, you know, looks really icky and nasty, don't let your dog or your pets. And we've been saying that message for a long time. And I think that that would be very helpful in this monitoring, because if you walk out there and it's clear, and you know it's clear, and then lower, you know, it's like a non-detect, you go over there and it's a nasty muck, like when we see in the Oaks over there in the channels, and it looks disgusting, apologize to anybody who's from there, but it does. And then you take the sample, and you say, oh, this is loaded with cyan. Well, naturally, it is, and you shouldn't be swimming in there, neither should your dog, so that we can correlate that and help people, those of us that are the certified tourist ambassadors, I mean, we don't want to scare people away, but at the same time, we want to give them good information. And if we have a correlation, anytime you see this, you should probably be careful. But it doesn't necessarily mean we need to like post signs over the, you know, 200 feet of, you know...
I think notifying the public comes to, also notifying about safe areas to recreate.
Yes.
Not just dangerous areas, but safe areas. And I think you should allow your public to decide themselves if they want to recreate a place that's unsafe.
Right, but if they know what it looks like when it's not safe.
We do take photographs at every site, every time we go sailing. So we do have those photographed matched. And last year, there was sites where the water was clear, but yet we did get toxin results above the threshold. So I mean, like Sarah had said, even with a bloom, it can go away, and after seven to 10 days, it can still be there. So it is, you know, I mean...
So it is, you know, I mean, the big part I. Because it's dissolved in the water. Yeah. You know, you're not going to see it after the bloom dies. It's still there.
Thank you.
Lakeport is just fortunate to have the nice side of the lake, the upper arm that doesn't, you know, you just get all the nutrient feeding, or the majority of the nutrient feeding, and the rest, it goes down to the Oak Arm and the lower arm. So you're just fortunate.
That's our question. That's our turn.
In the water purveyor testing that you're recommending, if you have above the threshold results on the shoreline, have you seen, part of your presentation was that there was not as much correlation even offshore. And so since our water intake is like way yonder, I'm wondering if your level of comfort with that sort of a request, given that it would be unlikely that the water that we're pulling in is going to have anything near what you have said, or it would be more consistent with having a total disconnect?
Well, we're not testing anywhere else but the shoreline. So we, you know, it would behoove the water purveyors to be testing their intake water. And we could have a system of, you know, as soon as we get the results, you get the results, and if, and we can have sites that are close to where your water purveyor is, or even the feasibility study that Corolla's talking about, and then they can go ahead and do treat it, you know, test the treated. I mean, there's really a, there's a good response flow that we can have with this. I do have numbers on that. I mean, Red Bud Park on August 4th, 2015, was at 21 parts per billion, that's shoreline. And then I did get a raw water sample from Highland's Water Intake, which is just out off the shore, and they were at 10 parts per billion. So I mean, there is definitely a drop, but there's still not a significant drop. It could be, you know, and it could even go the other way. It depends on where your bloom is floating at. So that's, you know, that's, the unsettling part of it is that it's, you know, it's not for sure as to what those levels are at, at what parts of the lake.
Proton?
Is there any grant money out there for prevention, like to circulate the water?
319 Nonpoint Source Grants from US EPA that are offered by the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Board. That grant was due about a week and a half ago for $800,000. So I don't know if the county applied for it. I think that the cities and the tribes should get together and apply for this thing, because we, you know, we have the real strong interest and the manpower, and you know, that's, we had hoped to, Big Valley had hoped to submit one for this year, but there was just a little too much more that we had to do to pull it together. But it's implementation projects. So nutrient reduction loading is, there's a lot of different ways to do it. Matter of fact, in 1994, there's a Clear Lake study that I'm sure you can get a copy from the county. I have a PDF of it myself. And it is the causes and control of algae blooms. So this is, you know, some people say, "Well, why do you keep studying?" Well, we're looking at toxin levels. We're not actually studying so much as we're looking at toxin levels for public health purposes. It's already been kind of laid out what you need to do, which is stop erosion, stop, you know, your storm drain cleanout programs that you have, your street sweeping, all of those are fantastic projects. If you have areas of erosion, they need to be dealt with. If you have septic systems, I don't think you have any in the city of Clear Lake, but they need to be maintained, I mean, city of Lakeport, sorry, they need to be maintained. So Middle Creek is something that feeds, you know, and it's outside of your jurisdiction, but we need to encourage any and all projects on Middle Creek, as well as some of the other creeks that have lost all the tulies. Tulie replanting is another way to stop sediment loading into the lake. So 319, US EPA 319 grants, that is, it's Section 319 of the Clean Water Act is what the 319 refers to.
So we should talk next year?
Yeah, we should talk this spring.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? What about the, what help would it be to finally finish the Middle Creek Restoration Flood Control Program that's been going on for 40 years?
Yeah, that's why I'm giving up on it personally, because I know people are not ever going to sell that land. So why not, I mean, the studies have been done that show that a significant amount of sediment loading is happening in Middle Creek. And sediment means there's phosphorus bound to it, and phosphorus is one of the foods for cyanobacteria. So if we create the marshland that used to be there, it is supposed to be keeping the sediment out of the lake, and a significant amount of sediment is coming into the lake. I'm giving up on it personally, because I don't think people are ever going to sell their land, who haven't sold their land already. So what we're going after is a grant for, that is due at the end of this month, to do, start to do some specific work on properties. Let's help with erosion on Mr. X's property and Ms. Y's property, and let's start to stop erosion from happening, because that's, erosion and sediment loading is, again, is what's bringing in the phosphorus. So I kind of given up on it, like I said, but I think we can target smaller projects on these creeks. I mean, even the creeks in the city of Lakeport are, need some help. You know, Forbes Creek needs some help, because it's, there's a lot of concrete lining it, and there's some replanting and restoration that can happen, even through volunteer programs. You know, I think people want to replant tulies. They like that idea. The county started that whole idea. I think they went after a grant to actually propagate tulies. So I hope we're going to have a whole lot of tulies that we can start putting in, and then we can put them in along the creeks where they used to be, and start to correct some of the things that have been happening, the channelizing of the creeks that have happened over the last, you know, several decades, and bringing it back to more natural.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there a guesstimate, or a best guesstimate on how long the cyanobacteria's been in Clear Lake?
Well, cyanobacteria is an ancient organism. However, there has been monitoring, it's been done over the decades, and in, in, let's see, in, I believe it's 2011, UC Santa Cruz. So nutrient, or cyanobacteria blooms really started getting bad here around 2009, right? But there were blooms periodically throughout the decades, but no one was worried about toxins, because maybe no one knew about them, or maybe someone did a test, and it was no big deal. So what's happened? So 2009, we had the first kind of big nasty bloom that happened on the lake that was kind of all encompassing. In 2011, UC Santa Cruz sent some people here, and they did a study called the Meoni Report, or the Meoni Study. And they had a bunch of sites, I don't know, 10 or 15 sites around the shoreline and in the, more in the middle of the lake, and they looked at cyanobacteria or blueberry algae counts, you know, how many cells are there? And then they actually did toxin monitoring, too. The highest level in 2011 that Meoni got was something like 29 for microcystin. So that was 2011. In 2012, there was, she, I don't think there was any monitoring in 2012, but there was still the blooms. In 2013, there was a dog death, which has been, you can talk to Dr. Karen Tate. She has confirmed after they looked at the stained cell, a liver cell of the dog, and I don't know which part of the lake he was in, but the dog was playing in the tulies, and it was, it was full of microcystin. So that was 2013. And 2014, we started, oh, and in 2013, there was a water purveyors program that Corolla was talking about that showed these low levels, you know, 28, 14, whatever, all around the lake. They looked at every single water purveyor. So we were seeing these low numbers. On 2014, when there was a fish kill in the Soda Bay Cove area, and the water was blue, and you know, the blooms were still bad, that's when we're like, well, let's just see what these levels are, send it off to the lab. And like the very first result that we got from the UC Davis lab was, yeah, 600. 600. Now, I've talked to lake managers back east who say that once cyanobacteria, for some reason, it starts the toxin, once the toxins start up, then you go through this whole regime change of different types of cyanobacteria, different types of cyanotoxin, and it kind of gets worse over the years. So, and it just stops. So we don't know when or how long, but in previous monitoring, it did not show high levels up until, well, it turns out actually, in 2013, with the dog death, there was a level of 300. You can ask Carolyn Tan about the results that they got where the dog was playing. But it turns out that even in Meoni, when she continued her study, was getting a couple hundred. So we are starting to get some evidence of it, not that any of us knew about it, but I guess Meoni knew about it, and the county knew about it. But then in 2014, when we just started to take some samples, it's like, wow, this is a lot, all of a sudden, it's, in a few spots, it's really bad. So it, you know, as Corolla said, with the fire, we've not seen any, you know, very little cyanobacteria, very little toxins, since that's like the silver lining in the cloud of these fires, starting with the Rocky Fire. So it might stay like that for next year. But we are going to get a lot of nutrient loading because of the, you know, if we get the El Nino and all of the vegetation that's been lost, we need to work on restoration projects and trying to shore up the sediment loading that's going to be happening. So we think it's wise, tribes think it's wise to continue the monitoring program because of the levels that we've been getting, but, and base it on, you know, base our action on what kind of results we're getting. So we're hoping that it's going to be great next year. But we're prepared also to continue the monitoring, and we think signage, and press releases, and transparency, and mitigation projects, remediation projects is the way to go, so we're actually acting on it as well.
Anything further from Council? Any questions from staff? All right, thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Corolla. Appreciate it very much. Anyone from the public have a question or comment on the presentation? All right, thanks again, ladies. Appreciate that. All right, we'll be moving on to our update from Rebecca Southwick on the Lake Leadership Summit, to be held October 9th at Marymount.
Put this on the back table. Sure, me.
And folks, too, our clerk is going to place the domestic violence awareness pins on the entry table there at Council Chambers.
So I'm going to show you my back. And you.
Rebecca, could you pull that microphone to yourself and say your name to the police for the record?
Certainly. Rebecca Southwick. Thanks for having me. All right. My presentation has cartoons in it, so definite drop from what you just saw. Just wanted to warn you.
It's a cartoon of cyanobacteria?
Not at all.
I'm going to call you a peddles on it.
Really, no. I'm here today to talk about the Lake Leadership Summit, and some of you are familiar with it? Are all of you familiar with it? You're all nodding your head, so really, I should just go home. All right, I'll make it really fast, okay? So I'm hoping this works. Who we are? The people behind this summit are not your usual suspects. They're not the typical. We're the Lake County Regional Economic Development Committee, which that name is rolls right off the tongue. I know. We can't even come, we don't even have a great acronym. So our first order of business after we've become a not-for-profit is coming up with a catchy name. So it'll be shorter. I'm voting two words. But we're a group of volunteers, all of us. It started out as single digits a couple of years ago. I was recruited to come and give a speech, and I never left. We're now up to 50 people. So, and I think after this year's summit, we're going to grow even bigger. But we are a group of people from all over the county. So we've got some municipal people, Margaret, and we have some showing from across the lake as well. We also have some county people, chambers of commerce, education, health leaders, ag people, we've got some artists, small business owners. So it's not just one thing. It's not just one group. We want to hear from everybody. So, oh, I just noticed a typo. Don't you hate that when you're giving a presentation? All right, so what do we want? Basically, what we want is, we want our small business community here to grow. That's really what we want. We also want to be a contender for new businesses to come here. And so we have, or we're cut out for us. We realize it's audacious, but we're audacious people. So last year, the Meals on Wheels building allowed us to take it over, and you probably recognize our chalkboard wall. I hope you recognize our chalkboard wall. This was its first day. We did it in August of 2014, the same day it's Taste of Lakeport, and this was at about, what, 11:00 in the morning, I think? And we were really worried no one would come to our party. I don't know if you've ever given a party and thought, wow, no one's going to come? So that was in 11, and that was at, I think, 7 o'clock in the evening. So it was full. We were blown away. And what we discovered from that chalkboard wall is that people, it made people stop, it made people smile, as corny as that might be, and think about, instead of what's wrong with Lake County, what's right about it. And that's not nothing. It made, well, some of my favorite entries, I think, probably are my favorite one, really, because I'm kind of a staff. I met my wife here. That's my top one. I love that one. The view out of my grandma's window, because my mom lives here, and of course, you can see yourself. There's the wine, my friends, and this is this year's version. And I'm pretty sure you guys know that you posted our wall, so I want to thank you for that. That's pretty awesome. After the Knopka Challenge, too, that's the coolest that wall's ever looked. The entries are so positive. There are no suspect part at all, and I'll just leave it at that. And there's no entries where I'm like, oh, come on, people. It's all fantastic. So I took prodigious pictures, which are not here, but go take a look. So the wall was actually created so that we could do a little bit of guerrilla advertising about the summit. So what is the summit? I want to talk about what it's not. It's not an expo. It's not a wine and cheese mixer. It's not something where you exchange business cards, and then you pull it out of your wallet or your purse a couple of weeks later and go, "Who is this person?" When we were challenged to create this, we were told, "Hey, you guys want to put an expo together?" And we thought, um, okay. And then our first meeting, we got together and we're like, "We don't want to do an expo. Not an expo, anything but an expo." Because all we could think of was the 80s. Made us think of the 80s. And while I love the 80s, like the hairstyles from 80s, I'll just admit it, that was it. So we wanted to challenge people. We wanted to do everything different. So do you guys know what TED Talks are? Okay, most of you, yeah, cool. So 99U, do you guys know what 99U is? It's like the filthier version of TED Talks. Seriously, they're awesome. So go to 99u.com. No, I mean, they're really cool.
You probably weren't going to get Indiana busts to admit to that, right?
Oh, okay. Well, okay. I won't ask you about it next time I see you. But it's like TED Talks, only a little, with an edge. So we've all just absolutely loved them. So we wanted to base the summit on kind of that, just taking ideas, putting the mountains to the world, and seeing what happened. And we really knew that we wanted laughter to be a big part of the day, so that was important to us. So we scribbled way outside the lines. We noticed that Walla Walla, Washington, believe it or not, is almost an exact replica of us, demographic-wise, and they are thriving. So I thought, well, how the heck did they do that? So David Olsen came, he's the president and CEO of their chamber, and he talked to us about it. They were actually, he'll never admit to this, but it's true, they were a gang-banging sort of community 20 years ago, and their rep has completely changed. Now, people go there on purpose to drink their wine. They have over 85 wineries, wonderful restaurants. They're the place to be. And then we also did a session called Arranged Marriages, more than a one-night stand, and it was basically, we were very interested in collaborating, because the one thing Lake County really has are relationships. We know how to partner up. So basically, it was a really fast and furious networking exercise. And at first, people kind of looked at us like, "This is crazy. It'll never work." But it was loud, and it was fun, I think? Yes? Okay, good. And it ended up being the most popular thing that we did, according to all of the feedback we got. So what we discovered, and if we had, uh-oh. Oh, no. Oh, okay, good. Good. It's not going to play, right? But please don't play it. What we discovered is, we actually have a collaboration right here in our backyard, where two businesses who really don't have a heck of a lot to do with each other have partnered up, and they've grown their own businesses into something bigger and better. Mendel Lakes Up, which is a stand-up paddleboard business, and Car Polatties on Cross Market. That Shannon King on the paddleboard to your right, she's the crazy lady who teaches Pilates on the paddleboard on Clear Lake several times a week. I can hardly do Pilates on the ground. So, but they've grown both of their businesses exponentially. So we featured this video, which I'm not going to show you, but you can go to embracethelake.com and look it, check it out. That was part of our, one of our presentations. We also featured Mo McElroy from Sonoma's County's CTA program, and of course, Rob Freeman. He was with Focus Financial. He walked us through a segment called Google Plus, Facebook, Vine, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, and why the hell they matter. So it was a day where we all got together, we had great presentations, great breakout sessions, and it mattered. I don't know. It stood out. So this, this summit, we almost called it off because of the Valley Fire. We thought it's too soon. I don't know if anyone's going to want to come. We watched the containment numbers grow, and we heard about a lot of people in Middletown who lost not just their homes, but their businesses in their homes, because a lot of people in Middletown, they worked out of their homes. We thought, okay, wait. How do we help? Aside from just giving money? How do we help? What's our wheelhouse? Well, helping businesses. So what are we going to do? We're going to dig in. And last year was all about how a community like ours turned itself around after a period of 20 years. We don't have 20 years. We have right now. So this summit is going to be grabbing the tools that you have and doing what you can with what you've got. I think all of us are guilty of falling into focusing on our limitations. There's UC Davis social psychologist, Alison Ledgerwood, and she talks about how much actual physical energy it takes, there's scientific proof, that's the only science I know, by the way, about how much energy it takes to get funds stuck from being negative and moving it to a positive. So our summit peeps that are putting this together, we know that we're going to get a lot of resources to rebuild. We do know that, and we do know that there's grant funding out there. But what about later? We're focused on the future, and we're done looking to the horizon for someone else to save us. We think we, and by we, I mean, Lake County residents, have the grit, the tenacity, and the creativity to save us. So this year, the summit is going to be offering an interesting game show format of Business Jeopardy, Show Me the Money, and we're going to have some bankers who you might recognize hosting an unusual educational presentation about the ways that small businesses and startups can qualify for funding. We're also going to be doing Speed Date Your Business. Rob Friedman, he's a direct marketing and communications expert. He'll be giving a presentation called Your Website Storefront Looks Like Hell, Websites 99. And Kelly and Pam with North Bay Made, they're going to talk about the makers movement and how they're already getting our products here from Lake County out into Northern California and beyond. We're also going to be doing the Red Carpet Awards. This is partly because I like getting dressed up and I like award shows. We're going to, you can vote right now at lakeonews.com. There's a tall skyscraper out on the very right-hand side. Voting many times is absolutely, please do it, over and over. Stuff the ballot box, okay? The awards are the Startup Sensation Award, has to be for your favorite business that is two years old or younger, okay? The Enticing Storefront Award, this is my baby, because I love storefronts, that are clean and inviting and look like, please spend money in me. And the Customer Service Award puts Nordstroms to shame, okay? Cool. But the speaker I'm most excited about is this woman. This is Amy Carril. She is the executive director of Detroit Soup. Amy's program is a crowdfunding micro-grant program, and she has been featured on my cover of the New York Times. She's been on NBC, ABC, Good Morning America, The Huffington Post, the BBC, Bo Magazine. I believe she's actually met Oprah. She's also been the 2013 recipient of the White House's Champion of Change Award. So I'm one of those weird people. I see correlations between stuff no one else does, obviously. Walla Walla? Yeah, okay. So I stumbled across Amy after watching a 99U talk about Detroit. And believe it or not, just stay with me here, Detroit and Lakeport and Lake County actually have some similarities. So just hear me out before you throw stuff at me. Really, okay? There is, I'm serious. So a third of the people in Detroit have left. They're gone. It used to be this thriving city, right? Okay? A third of the people in Lake County leave every day to work somewhere else, okay? That's like, that's a real statistic. Detroit has been known across the globe for crime. I'm not saying we're known for crime, but I am saying the media is constantly throwing sticks and stones at us for poverty, children's poverty, seniors' poverty, highest morbidity rate, highest mortality rate. Oy. Okay, they never report the good stuff, right? This picture right here, that's something that Amy Carril calls blight porn. The news loves to pull up pictures like that of Detroit. Those are the pictures we see. We don't see the thriving economy. We don't see the cool little businesses. We don't see the cool restaurants. They're there, but the media doesn't show them. Here's what interested me. Two-thirds of Detroit stayed. They stayed, okay? A third of the people who leave every day to go to work, guess what? They live here. They live here, right? Why? Because we love it. Those two-thirds of the people who stayed, they love it. So what makes them so cool? What makes us so cool? We dig in, right? So for instance, I don't know if you've heard of the Detroit mower gang in Detroit. The city cut off all their funding for any kind of landscaping. Some older guys, they were like, hey, wait a second. I have a lawnmower. You have a lawnmower? Cool, you want to meet after work? They started mowing playgrounds, they started mowing baseball diamonds, they started mowing parks. Now they're a thing. They meet constantly. They're the people who keep these places open, okay? Andy DiNirosi, he's actually how I met Amy. He got mad because the after-school bus program wouldn't take people from schools to the after-school bus, to the after-school programs' home. So he and his friends, they bought three school buses from an auction. They're like, what did we want when we were kids? From a bus. We wanted a cool bus driver, we wanted a cool-looking bus, and we wanted cool music. They got graffiti artists, they made the buses look awesome, they installed cheap music systems, okay? They got licensed bus drivers who are awesome. So they started small with the three buses. Now that bus company is busing 4,500 kids every day from the schools to the after-school program home. These people are filling a need. They're just stepping forward. They're doing it. They're saying, what's in my garage? I'll do it, okay? We've got that right here in Lake County. We've got that spirit, that grit. So, uh-oh, doesn't work when I'm not turned around. Soup is actually a very simple idea, Detroit Soup, and it's taken hold across the United States. Four entrepreneurs come once a month, and they pitch their idea, kind of like Shark Tank, only familiar. Four minutes, each of them have four minutes in front of the crowd, okay? They pitch their idea for four minutes, there's two minutes of questions, they sit down. Everybody gets a meal for five bucks. They get soup, a roll, a drink, and a vote. Over dinner, everybody talks about these business ideas, and then they vote on their favorite one. At the end of the night, the one with the most votes get the evening's take. In three months, that person has to come back and report back what they've done to launch their business. This idea has actually launched more not-for-profits, more small businesses. It's amazing. And I think it's something that we can do in Middletown. And in fact, Middletown Art Center has invited us there. So Amy's going to talk more and more about some of the challenges they've had. It's been going on for five years. I'm excited, obviously. We don't know how Middletown, Hidden Valley Lake, or Cobb are going to look when they recover. We just know that they're going to be different, and we're pretty sure that what's going to happen is, there are going to be a lot of people that step forward, and they say, hey, you know what? I see a need, and I want to fill it. And we really want to back those people. We want to say, go, go as far as you can. I'm ahead of myself. I've already revealed we want a soup here. So after the summit, we've already set up workshops. We do have one website boot camp on October 28th. When you walk in at 5:30, you'll sit down at a computer monitor. When you walk out three hours later, you'll have a functioning website. On the 29th, we'll host Business Jeopardy, Show Me the Money, which will be an interactive version of the summit's presentation. Small businesses can actually sit down and talk with a banker, fill out paperwork if they need to. And on January 16th, we'll do a presentation called The Art of Marketing Art. We have amazing artists in this community. We want to show them how to get their art out into the world. So we have five tickets left for the summit, and by the time I get home, I'm wondering if they'll be sold out. If you go to embracethelake.com, you will notice that the registration portion, you can only get so far before the website dies. But if you click on Continue to Payment, I will get your email. You don't need to call me to tell me the website's broken. I know. I know, because I spent the past 48 hours fielding phone calls. So does anyone have any questions for me? All right, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Rebecca. Anything from staff? Anyone from the public have a question or comment? If you'd want to, please. Thanks. Thank you very much, Rebecca. And we'll see you Friday. All right, next up, we have the donation of the annual fireworks show, Lake County Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Every year for several years now, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce has conducted a fundraiser expressly to raise money to help offset the cost of the fireworks. This year, Bruno's Market did their part, and we are pleased to present to the city a check for $3,324.77. So I'm not sure who wants to come and accept that.
Well, let Margaret accept that one.
Thank you very much. Oh, you're welcome, Margaret. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's great that that happens, and it really helps, and people really enjoy the fireworks show. So thank you to Bruno's, and thank you very much, Melissa, on the Chamber of Commerce.
You know, I don't know that this is ever going to be appropriate to say this, and that's kind of my style.
Can you shut his mic up?
But you know, this is one of the few times when you walk through the register and they say, would you like to add a dollar? You know, Lake County is one of the poorest counties in all the state, and they have some really great employees at a lot of these big superstores, these big department stores. Would you like to add a dollar? Yeah, and they like, almost strong-arm people into doing it. And a lot of times, people don't even know what they're asking for, and they got names plastered all over. And it really irks me to see this money going out, you know, to Memphis, Tennessee, or to Florida, or Jackson, wherever. And you know, this is one of the programs that goes right to Lake County, right into Lakeport, right off the shore. And I don't know why these big corporates are such in a hurry to take money out of the hands of these people from Lakeport, Horace County, and send it to some research facility, and literally doing it very, very well. I give the employees kudos, but I really question the management, why they don't help LFRC, or why they don't help hospice, or why they don't help, you know, the ad of things. So this is an editorial comment, but I really want to say that Bruno's has done a great job, and I think it's great, but I just wish that more businesses would look to helping our own little poor community rather than sending money off and strong-arming customers as they go through the register. So God bless Bruno's anyway.
Yeah, and Melissa, that was the Dollar Campaign, correct? Add a dollar.
Add a Dollar Campaign, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll do it again next year.
Well, thank you again. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our public hearing this evening, we actually have three, actually four. And these are all inclusive of minor amendments and revisions to existing ordinances. And Mr. Ingram? And I assume that we'll just take these up one by one, public hearing-wise, so.
That's completely up to you guys. I figured I'd come up here since you guys stole my microphone, so. Really quickly, we did go over these a little bit before, but as you know, this is the official public hearing, so after the first reading at the previous hearing, what we have here are three sort of small, minor amendments to the Lakeport municipal code. I'll go through each of them sort of individually. The first being, as a result of state legislation, AV 1288, which was passed in September of 2014, requiring small residential rooftop solar energy system review process. That is a requirement that that be done, having over-the-counter sort of permit. It also requires that there sort of be a checklist that's in place, that's ready to go. We have already, we've got a bunch of sample ones from other jurisdictions and other, specifically, our building officials taking a look at the North Bay Redwood Empire version of it, and is very happy with that. And we've already started to work with it and make it our own, and are pretty much ready to get that on the website once this, assuming this goes into effect after you guys pass it. You guys also asked some questions during the last hearing about how many of these permits we have issued over the past couple of years. And so I did some research in there, or I should say, Linda Solerai did some research in this. And what we found is that we've issued about 30 over the past couple of years. Specifically, we've issued eight rooftop mounted solar systems this year alone. So it's a pretty high number of our total permitting, considering that we have not been, unfortunately, issuing a bunch of residential building permits. This probably makes up a bulk of that residential permitting. We do have a tech position that we primarily want to fill to assist in our building division, and that's going to go a long way to sort of help complying with these sort of things where someone would be able to come in and be able to present their information and have a permit in hand at the day of. The other sort of thing that this, well, not sort of, it's required, would be that there only be one inspection. And I've talked with Tom Carlton, our building official, and that hasn't been a problem. We've been sort of doing these in one inspection as it is right now. So it shouldn't be too difficult to comply with, and we're pretty much ready to go to get the system in place. The second item before you is probably the more fun one. This is a repealing section of municipal code imposing additional licensing fees on fortune tellers. This is sort of a product of our business license fee ordinance that was done in the late 1950s, and it did sort of kind of add sort of punitive, you know, a daily fee upon these types of businesses. We haven't had too many proposals for fortune tellers, but we recently did have someone who brought this to our attention, and so when working with our city attorney kind of identified that, yes, fortune telling does constitute protected speech, and so therefore, we did need to make some amendments, and that's what's being proposed there to Section 5.04 of the Lakeport Municipal Code. The last one was brought to our attention by a couple of businesses in the downtown area who have residences above their business on Main Street, specifically in the area of the 100 block, the west side of the 100 block on Main Street, where they've been getting many parking tickets because they do not have any access to parking, onsite parking. So we did kind of, the police chief, myself, and the city manager did kind of a little walking audit of that area, and it became very clear that there is a problem, does exist for this specific group of folks. And what we are requesting is a revision to 10.12.180 of the Lakeport Municipal Code that allows the police chief to issue special permits. And this would be a special permit for just those specific residences above businesses that do not have access to onsite parking. They would be allowed to park in limited-zone parking areas, but not directly in front of businesses. So that's kind of in a nutshell, those three items, and I do have it presented to you guys here as three separate motions, just as a clarity item there for you guys to take under consideration.
Any questions? Thanks, Kevin. Any questions from council regarding item number one? This is the solar permitting?
Well, the only question I had is that you have a single inspection. Well, if you go out and you do a single inspection and there's something wrong, and then, I mean, so you just say, well, just let us know that you took care of it, or how does that work?
Well, the idea behind it really comes back to that checklist at the beginning. So assuming that the checklist has been completed and we've done a review on it, then really the building inspector is just going out and sort of double-checking at least that checklist has been done. But I checked with Tom, and he said, you know, this is, these kind of rooftop-mounted solar systems are already sort of pre-engineered, they come in a sort of packaged thing. He's just really doing some minor, you know, connection, you know, making sure that they're actually... know, that they're actually into the roof choice and things like that. So, it's not, it's not a huge inspection ordeal. So, there really isn't any correction notices that come onto it.
And the onus is still on the homeowner or the contractor, and if the checklist isn't fulfilled, then it will not be passed.
Correct. It would still be pushed back over the counter if they did not have all those items on the checklist.
Meaning they would have a second inspection.
Well, hopefully, it would be caught before they even got that inspection. That would be when they turn their permits in.
I mean, this was just a new shot.
Anything further from council on this? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments on item number one for the solar permitting?
Are you going to, are you opening the public hearing?
Opening the public hearing? No, I'm going to do each individually. There are three individual items, three individual public hearings.
I guess we opened all three, but then...
We used to do one separate.
I'm going to leave it to the attorney.
I think you can do it as one as you want, or you can divide it up and do it individually.
Well, if we can do it all at once, we'll do it all for one. Okay. And then, any questions from council regarding the licensing fees for fortune tellers?
Not today.
Anything for the parking permit? All right. At this point, we'll open the public hearing for items one through three. And if anyone from the public has any questions or comments on any of those three items, it's your opportunity to come up and speak. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to council for consideration.
I called the fortune telling ones.
I don't have the microphone.
Okay, regarding the small residential rooftop solar energy system review process, I'd move to approve the ordinance adding Section 15.24 of the Lakeport Municipal Code establishing a review process for small residential rooftop solar energy systems.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Regarding suggested motion number B, I move to approve the ordinance repealing sections of the Lakeport Municipal Code imposing additional licensing fees on fortune tellers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And with the leadership summit, we welcome now all fortune tellers in City Lakeport. Business friendly.
I'll move to approve the ordinance amending Section 10.12.180 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to allow for the issuance of special parking permits for residential units in the central business district without access to onsite parking.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. All right, item B, Lakeport Industrial Authority. Mr. Buffalo.
Thank you, Mayor Shilman. Those of the council, we brought this item to your attention at the last council meeting regarding development, or I should say, the formation of an industrial development authority, which will help us facilitate the transaction with yours today for the purchase of the new police station. We're asking that the council conduct a public hearing at this time before making the decision on adoption of the ordinance.
Any questions for Dan? All right, seeing none, we will open up the public hearing for consideration of the Lakeport Industrial Authority. Any going from the public have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for consideration.
Just a point, small point. If somebody does make a motion approving this, it would be best if they ran the title. I noticed the suggestion, suggested motion doesn't have the title language in it.
Title of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just that title.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lakeport forming the Lakeport Industrial Development Authority. Is that it?
Maybe.
Forming the Lakeport Industrial Development Agency.
Authority.
Okay. So, as I said, getting authority.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further from council on this item? We've got it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Moving on to council business, also from Mr. Buffalo, our finance director, a council signature confirmation.
Thank you, Mayor Shilman. Due to periodic changes in staffing, as well as the makeup of the council body, sometimes we need to revise the signatories for the city's checking account. And with retirement of our city clerk, we felt that we needed a judicial body to replace her as a signatory at the staff level. And then, we're also asking the mayor to appoint two members of the council to be signatories as well, to really act as a reserve, if you will, for having signatures available for regular warrant runs or special check runs. We're trying to keep this to a minimum as far as both the number of staff and council involvement process, but also having to revise this. We thought we had a good place with the resolution that identified positions in the past, but we really foresee things like retirement and having actually fewer bodies. So, here, we're asking that the police chief be appointed or authorized by council as a signatory in addition to a city clerk, because we have one fewer body, city clerk being filled or served by the service administrator. And then, we just wanted to make sure that the council had a chance to revisit whose signing checks the council has.
Thank you, Dan. Anything from council? Councilmember Spillman, are you still ready, ruling enabled?
Yeah, I'm usually about ten minutes away.
Okay. I, myself, am in the same vote, so I'd still be happy to be the signatory. I would request that the next time 106 checks are printed, it be Councilmember Spillman that signs it.
That's what I go about.
Anything else from council, concerns, questions? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments on the current agenda? All right, seeing none, back to council for consideration and a motion.
So, are we changing anything?
We're adding, we're adding the chief of police in lieu of our city clerk.
Because city clerk and admin are now the same person, so we have less one set.
But the suggested motion is the same, except that it might say, well, you say city council members, even though he's the mayor.
Right.
Yeah, still a council member.
Go ahead.
I would like to move to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing signatories to the city's checking payroll and investment funds accounts. Appoint the following Lakeport City Council members: Mayor Martin Shil and Councilmember Mark Spillman, and confirm Margaret Silbera, City Manager Kelly Fuendia, Administrative Services Director Brad Rasmussen, Chief of Police, and Kevin Ingram, Community Development Director, as authorized signatories on the bank accounts with West America.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, item B from our Community Development Director. This is a valley fire registry evacuees, and this is regarding waiving a maximum of 30 days, day stay allowance at local hotels, and waiving initial services, deposit fees. Mr. Ingram.
Thank you. Just really quickly, we also did an audit, kind of a calling our local hotels and folks just recently here last week, to kind of see, get kind of a head count of how many valley fire victims we actually have in here. And the number is actually surprisingly pretty low. We only have, of the five or so hotels that we call, just under eight folks, eight families. Some of them did report that they still have fire personnel that are staying with them. And really, most of the impact that our local hotels saw was in regards to the Riviera's evacuations, because that was a little bit closer geographically to the city of Lakeport. But nonetheless, we felt, given the situation, it was kind of important to take a look at our municipal code and see if there are any areas where we can provide temporary relief for those who are seeking, seeking temporary refuge while they're reconstructing their homes in the Compton Valley and Middletown areas. And the two areas that staff identified, or specifically, I said, kind of the stay requirements, the 30-day stay requirements, our local hotels are temporarily allowing that to be exceeded. And then, the second one, allowing our startup fees and deposit fees for new connections, for say, a renter coming in to fill a home in the Lakeport area who's a, who's a valley fire victim, to have those waived. So, that's kind of the two areas there. Certainly, we're open to any ideas if there are, if there are more areas that we think that we can, that we can assist. As far as the resolution, I think Councilmember Turner kind of suggested that it, to maybe clarify a little bit better what we mean by a registered, a registered evacuee area. I think the suggested wording would be a FEMA registered evacuee.
Is that the registration that you were...
Correct. That's, that's... That's what we're doing there. So, I think that there may be a slight wording amendment that would be appropriate there. Any questions? Go ahead.
Well, I guess my question would be, with what Councilmember Turner's requesting, is that we restrict it only to those that registered for FEMA?
The wording of the resolution said registered. Shall be waived for registered and qualifying displaced residents? So, my question was, registered with whom?
Oh, correct. That's right.
Right.
So, it's both.
So, the intent of the resolution was a FEMA registration.
Is inclusive, correct.
Correct.
That was all I had. Anything else from council? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for consideration. Do we need to include that amendment, then?
Yes, we do need to approve it as a matter.
Will you entertain a motion?
I would move to adopt the proposed resolution as amended, providing relief to displaced residents of the valley fire from certain requirements of the Lakeport Municipal Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. All right, moving on to council communications. Councilmember Parlett.
It's happened more than once that someone has commented to me that how great the parks look, and it's a shame that the rest of us have to be on water rationing, and they can just use all the water they want down at, you know, at the park. It was recommended that perhaps, and I've seen it, and I think, yeah, I think I even saw it in San Jose or something like that, that it says that this lawn uses non-potable water or something to that effect, to let people know that we're not like squandering, you know, potable water by watering this beautiful park out here. So, that was something that somebody brought up to me, and I just felt like, you know, maybe it would not be a bad idea to have little signs that said, "Yeah, we're not using, you know, drinking water, water the lawn," you know, which I think that most of us know and understand that, and the lake's right there, and we're probably using lake water. But sometimes, perception is reality, and so, I just felt like maybe I should bring that to someone's attention. But other than that, the League of California Cities, tremendous educational opportunity that I was there. And the one thing that did stand out in my mind in light of recent events that have happened, that of the few California cities, there are like 500 cities, give or take, 407 or whatever, there was only nine or 10 that actually went into bankruptcy, and I was just kind of interested to hear that the one, one of them went into bankruptcy because of a heavy-duty lawsuit. So, I just thought that was kind of like serendipitous that I would hear something like that, that lawsuits, yeah, can be crippling and actually do some serious damage to a city, and that maybe we should make sure that we always keep that in the back of our mind. So, along with a lot of other great stuff, and I just think that it's one of those things that, that every opportunity to go out and learn how to be a better, more informed person on different events that happen in cities all over this state is something that we should never overlook or pass up. So, and I want to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to go down there and partake in that, and it was great. Plus, I got my ethics, you know, maybe one, two, three, four taken care of again for another two years, so it's all good. So, thank you.
Councilmember Spillman.
Actually, I'd just like to acknowledge the effort and the time and the exposure of local law enforcement in the valley fire. I don't want to take anything away from the fire personnel, but I think lots of times people mentioned in the public, only the firefighters, and there was a tremendous effort put forth by law enforcement in that. So, that's it.
Councilmember Turner.
I echo the thanks to law enforcement, the overwhelming events of the last month have just strained local, state, and now federal resources to heights that have just been incredible. So, the way that the city of Lakeport has been so generous and open with the resources that we do have in a time when the need has never been greater was just really great to see. I was really proud to be part of the city. And I want to thank the council for excusing me from the last meeting, and thank Margaret for getting me out of the annual conference. It's been quite a thing, so.
Well-deserved excuse.
Yeah. Hopefully, that one won't be repeated anytime soon.
Cheers to that.
And I just wanted to promote the Purple Walk on October 17th that is promoting domestic violence awareness. I think it takes place at the Freedom House in Kelseyville for Lake Family Resource Center again this year. Thank you.
Proton.
Let me get in here. Well, let's see. I had the opportunity to go to League of California Cities Conference, and what an impressive organization. I'm always so impressed. They have some of the best lobbyists in the state advocating for the cities, and we need that. It's a great thing. Help us keep our local power, because we know what our citizens need and want. And great education. The classes were amazing. One thing that stands out was a class on retail centers and how creating areas like widened sidewalks and trees and nice seating pulls people into an area, and they want to hang out and shop there. So, just kind of funny.
Imagine that.
So, anyway, that stands out. We also had the honor of watching our mayor get sworn in as our division president of Redwood, where's that...
Redwood Empire.
Redwood Empire Division of League of California Cities. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's see, next week is LAFCO meeting here, and the other thing we've been working on is Lakeport's holiday festivities. We're changing it up a little bit this year. We've been working with the Main Street Association. It's going to be Lakeport's Holiday on the Lake, and there's going to be food, and drinks, and games, and music, and Santa, and little lighted, what do they call?
Lantern.
Lantern ceremony of the lake in the evening. So, there's more to come on that, but it should be really nice.
Well, I would echo all of my fellow council members' statements. Makes mine a lot shorter. I would add that it's homecoming week for Lakeport Unified, Clear Lake High School, and the football game will be on Friday night at home. So, for those of you who would like to see the homecoming floats that the four classes have done, and I believe they're doing a parade, too.
Parade at 3:30 on Street starting at nine tomorrow.
Yeah. So, they'll be bringing out quite a few of the folks, and not much more of that, actually. There is the Lake County Film Grand Opening at 5:00 on Friday, and I think that's more of a ribbon-cutting grand opening, but that's right here in Lakeport. And I'm sure if you search that up online, you can get the, I think it's 149 Main Street. And Tyra St. John would be the contact on that one for more information. And I think that's it. Other than for those of you that don't know where the Lake County wall is, it's right behind us, accessible from our municipal parking lot. And with that, Margaret, anything?
So, say, I'm really excited. We have awesome representation with our lead president, our division president. It's going to be great. Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank the unsung heroes of Public Works, the police and fire. You know, it's easier to get credit for, and very well-deserved credit. Our police worked many, many hours and in harm's way during that time. But Public Works also, their staff was working very late hours and worked really hard. About half our Public Works staff was out there working during the fire. So, thank you, Mark, to your and your staff. So, thank you.
Mr. Attorney? Nothing to report. Mr. Buffalo?
Nothing to report.
Brandon?
Nothing to report.
Chief?
I'll just add that the League also had some great police classes, so a lot of good stuff there. And then, thanks to the council for the comments on law enforcement. And also wanted to agree with Margaret on Public Works, and also thank their unit for immediately coming out when we had the serious injury hit-and-run accident last week. They provided a tremendous resource with closing the... They provided a tremendous resource with closing the streets with barricades and providing lighting. We could not have safely and effectively completed our job without their help. So, I thank them.
Mr. Ingram.
Just really quickly, I know the mayor mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, but just wanted to encourage folks interested in the downtown improvement project that we are having a community meeting this Thursday at 5:30 right here in the chambers. We've also been conducting business site visits Monday. We'll be doing that again on Thursday with our city engineering, community development department staff. They've been very well-received. It's been nice to get out there and specifically talk with the businesses directly about how the project is going to affect their specific site. Also, just wanted to reiterate the LAFCO meeting on the 14th, still special meeting time at, is it 1:00 or 1:30?
1:00.
1:00. Also here in the chambers. And I won't belabor the point, but I enjoyed the league conference as well. As Mayor Plutem pointed out, I believe there were a lot of tangible items that directly relate to us out of that retail conference. That was definitely one of the best workshops I attended. And lastly, just to note that the next city council meeting on the 20th, I will be in attendance, I will not be here, I'll be attending an economic development 101 training certificate program at Cal State Fresno. So, I'll be enjoying that meeting.
Matt Clerk?
Just let you know, I've emailed out and we've posted up on our website the recruitment brochure that we've been working on for a while and just encourage you to share with anybody that may be a good fit in our organization. We're specifically hoping that folks that have moved away and want to come back will look to the city of Lakeport as a potential employer, because it is a great place to move and work, so.
Looked pretty good. It looked great. Yeah. It was, hopefully that will help us get some candidates.
Yeah.
Anything else? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out.